Hey, uh, Jamie, could you text Morgan, please? And since she said she created those Zoom links, but they weren't. I just created some, but Sheldon, well, you know what I mean? He'll need links. I just, I'm emailing Sheldon some links for the ones I just created. But I, you know what I mean? I don't know if he checks his emails. So if you let her know, let him know, that would be great. Thank you.
I know. Well, my, actually, everywhere he goes.
My, my wife said we wanted to go on vacation, so apparently we wanted to go on vacation. So it's kind of a spur of the moment and.
All right, how are you doing?
Yeah, I'm doing good.
Good.
Hello. Okay, this is really a plain question. You know how we have public hearings, you know, because we have to? But if they come and they're not changing any zoning, why, why does the state make us do them? That's just a question I was thinking on my way over. Cause one of someone stands up and says, I don't want these houses here. So what? Is this already being recorded? Okay. Are we already online?
We are.
Is everyone hearing me say that?
I don't know.
Okay, anyway, anyway.
Travis, you wanna do some sort of initiation here or?
Sure, yeah. You on the ice bucket challenge or?
It's hot enough. Yeah, it's hot enough all.
Yeah, we can all watch.
Sure.
It does seem like it got really hot, just really quick.
Oh, yeah, we, we go from winter, we get about three days of spring and then all hell breaks loose.
Lee, there's something going on with his mouth. He can't open his mouth now.
Just changed.
Yeah, and he's gonna have to go in, I guess. I don't know, I don't know what they're gonna do. He can't, he can't eat. It takes him, it can't, it's like takes everything, open his mouth at all. I guess you have a disc here before you, you've jogged, smoked and.
Sheldon's gotta correct it in, or someone needs to let him into Zoom meeting, cause he's on the wrong link.
Probably cause he's on the wrong link, cause he's not.
Did you send it to my email?
I emailed him. His, I emailed him the new links, but, uh, yeah, I don't have anyone in the waiting room here. So he's probably on, which is weird, cause either me and Morgan are logging into different Zoom accounts. Or her Zoom, like, meetings aren't saving. Cause every time I log into the Zoom that we use, no meetings created. So I wonder, I wonder what's happening there. But yeah, I sent him some new ones, his email.
Yeah, Gene, I've seen him do that on, uh, fifty-one hundred west. I'll sit at church for a while. They'll just turn the lights on, slow people down.
That was really nice.
Yeah. They don't wanna get out when it's hot either.
You said Bryce said you'd be a little late.
Says isn't anyone, you just need help and he's.
You think he's, there's two of them. I emailed the bitch, he's in the other one.
He said it's the one he just.
Well, I had to email him a work meeting one, and I had to email him a meeting one. So if he clicked the very, I'd email him the work meeting Zoom, and then I'd email him the planning commissions Zoom. So if he opened, yeah, they're different. So if he opened the first, you know, it's really the one, right? Probably killing him.
Plus technology.
Yeah. Cause he's not in this waiting room either. It's the one titled work meeting, not planning commission. Sorry, I'll have to work that out with Morgan. Like I said, it's happened twice now where she's like, I created links and I log in and they're not. There's, she created meetings and I log in and they're not there. So like I said, we're either using different accounts, which would be weird, or, you know what I mean? I don't know. I don't know why they don't save the meeting she's creating, or they don't save when I log in, or I can't view. There he is. Third, third link later. Sheldon, three links later. Hey Sheldon, third link is the charm.
We made it.
There we go. And now we're out of the corner. I guess Bryce is gonna be late. Blake's not gonna be here next week. And Amanda, I'm not gonna be here tomorrow.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we can start our work meeting. We have a few items. We can discuss these agenda items first, and then Mountain has some stuff prepared for us on the ADU structure and things like that. But we talked about a few meetings ago that he can get into, and then some stuff on flat blocks, so. As far as the minutes look, I looked over and I didn't see anything that needed to be corrected. Did anyone else?
My, I don't know how big a deal, my name's misspelled on all of them. I'm E N instead of O N. I don't know, it's a big deal.
A Danish version?
Yeah. Okay, it's not, I don't care. It's just a matter of, somebody's gonna see it and say, oh. It's an E N, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And my mom's family's in Jensen, so I, I know, I know what you're going through.
Mine, my grandma's in Jensen.
So minutes look okay. That first item of business, the conditional use permit for the daycare. Is that, is the structure al- already built, or is it going to be built?
Yeah, she's wanting to get her CUP before she does it. Yeah, and really the structure wouldn't require CUP or anything. It's, it's small. What was it, thirty by twenty-five or something? Under nine hundred, it's a little building.
Yeah.
This is, this is going behind her house?
Yeah.
Kinda, yeah, off to the side, base level.
Yeah.
Behind her house.
Is the shed existing?
Must be, yeah. She called it out, she didn't have an application for it. One thing to note, you will see, uh, the dimension, she drew her dimensions on that, uh, school. I think she called it twenty-five by thirty. That's different than her application. It's like five feet bigger, but again, the size isn't the issue, it's just the use, so.
From everything there, I guess just the number of students, which I think she said.
I think she had like five or six, she said.
If you look at that little note, she's gonna do, yeah, two shifts, an AM and a PM, ten each. Our ordinance allows twelve for that size at a time. Well, it just says twelve students. That would be ten at any time, twenty total, but, you know. And then, uh, only other thought with that one, and not, probably not super relevant. Initially, her plan is to do a half-day kindergarten there, which, per my recommendation, she said I would probably just, she was gonna do it as like a public schoolhouse, but that would be pretty complex. I mean, cause kindergarten is not required, right? So it's really, I just said I would just do it at the daycare. If you wanna teach some curriculum, have at it. If you don't, you know what I mean? So really, uh, the age will be like five to six-year-olds that, you know, want a half-day kindergarten option where they can go.
Okay.
Um, and then it's gonna have plumbing, they'll have electricity. There's a little bathroom on there, she showed, and then I asked, it wasn't out of an application, I did ask how she was gonna cool it. She had mini splits. I don't know if those mini splits provide heat, if they've got a heat pump on them.
They do heat. They'll do both, yeah.
Yeah, so. Sounds like she, I don't know. Anyway, so that's her plans.
I looked over her website, seems like she has her, is qualified.
What, is there any issues, cause it's a business, but it's not in her home? So if you have a separate building that's commercial, that she lives in a residential zone, is there any issues with that?
I guess not, so long as you guys grant this permit. But yeah, otherwise, it would be, you know, wouldn't match zoning, but we do, it's allowed, this permit's allowed, there's a conditional use in this zone, it's permissible.
What other stuff is allowed in a zone like that? Like I couldn't put a motorcycle repair shop in a shed behind my house.
I don't know, we could look, it's like.
That, that would concern me, is where it's not in her home, it's not like in-home daycare.
I think a lot of the structures, they have to have separate, like it has to be separate from your.
Yeah, you have, I think you have to have a separate entrance, but where it's an actual separate structure. Just wonder what that opens the door for.
So she's in an R-two zone, um.
I mean, I didn't think it was any different than the, the one that we just approved, like, three weeks ago? That, um.
She's in an R-two zone, right here.
It was a daycare.
Oh, oh, yeah.
So these are some examples of what they're allowed or conditional in that zone. Bed and breakfast establishment would be conditional. You can kinda see.
So that's your daycare.
She's doing her daycare home group conditional. Drug and alcohol, if you're aware.
Okay, I have a cemetery there too, if you want.
The mausoleum. Power and sewer and.
Okay. Club, social hall. Yeah, so, I don't, I can't even remember the guy's name that came in, but she.
Alenia Winter?
Yeah.
Yeah, she did something similar. I don't know if hers, hers was home-based more in nature, I guess, but it still had a structure they were gonna do activities in, so. Not sure how you delineate or even regulate that. But it's definitely a consideration.
Sheldon, you have any concerns about, or questions about the first conditional use permit of daycare?
No, I don't.
Okay. Now, uh, into the public hearing for Kimball Estate.
Twenty-one lot, first three-quarter acre subdivision we've ever done. It's a new zone. We used to just have one acre and a half, and we decided to do a three-quarter option. Most of the staff's really excited about it, they're big lots, right? And even bigger than our halves, which are already big, so it'll be a really nice subdivision, straight next to the burnt church. They're on their third review, uh, they're getting their preliminary approval, their final approvals from all entities. UDOT is their main one they're finishing with, that they need in order to come next time. And I think they'll get their UDOT approval, they're on a UDOT road on fifty-nine, and then. Other than that, it's, like I said, just been through the review process. It didn't have any big complications throughout the review. It was pretty straightforward, and they were very compliant. They never tried to rezone or tried to do anything different. They just tried to comply with all of our ordinances, um, yeah, pretty straightforward.
Did the, was there a drainage? Did they, did that, was that the one that had the drainage that they had to figure out?
There is some considerations. We've done our diligence and talked to the surrounding, it's surrounded by farm grounds on the east and on the south. Yeah, um, probably on the north. It's just the church part, literally on the south. But anyways, it's surrounded pretty good, and so we talked to the different property owners, and there wasn't really drainage issues, um, from their standpoint. Just they built up a berm, which we asked them to remove. We think they built the berm up with anticipations that some of those farms are flooding onto their property. Well, that's fine right now, but once the subdivision's there, that couldn't work. And so we kind of made sure all the landowners surrounding there are aware that if you did have any, if you had any flooding, now that it'll be a residential use, you'll be, wouldn't be the subdividers issue, it'd be the, you know. And right now, they probably can do it, and it's not, not that they are, they just, when they saw that berm, like, why would they put that there? They might've just been anticipating that. But if that continued, the current farm owners or landowners would have to do a berm of their own, or some type of way to detain it, remove it. Cause they couldn't, you know, push it onto homes anymore, not even onto yards, that wouldn't work, so. So no, nothing on their end, and they're just complying and doing their stuff. I think it's MAC Builders, it's called Mark Three, but I think MAC Builders is pretty involved. He's like a, I think he builds out of West Point, it's some good guys, good project.
So is this considered a preliminary, or what is this?
This will just be a public hearing, just kinda how we discussed with, uh, Rossin, that seemed like you guys wanted to do public hearings on all of them. And so this one will come for final, your next meeting, I'm anticipating. Uh, but this was just so the public would have a chance to make comments prior to us approving it, right? And not approving it in the same meeting.
Okay, awesome. Have they looked at the land separation use fence? Getting that signed off, or what is their plan on that?
They're gonna install it, and yeah, it should be called out on the plans, but I have, that one has evaded me a few times, so I'll double check before you see it for final, that it's in. Does it, will need it?
I saw it on the Swayze.
Didn't notice it on Kimball? Okay, yeah, they're not getting it waived, so they'll need it. We'll make sure it's on there before it comes.
And these are a hundred and thirty-foot frontage, half-acre lots?
Three-quarter, there should be one forty.
One forty, three-quarter, thanks. This, I think this will be our first official three-quarter acre subdivision.
Yes.
Yeah, we're excited. Everyone's excited to see how the market takes to them.
Have they talked at all about what kind of price point they think?
They didn't mention it to us, no.
Three-quarter, that would be interesting.
Yeah, they're big lots, for sure.
Yeah. They're not selling lots so early, are they?
Well, I think MAC Builders will take some of their own, but I do think they kind of implied some of them will be, bring your own builder.
West Point, there's a MAC in North Ogden as well. Mike, Mike Elwood, is that where that is?
I don't know, his name, he's mostly been dealing with his partner, he's the developer.
Any other questions around? And then on the Swayze subdivision, just the one lot carved off.
Same situation, he's on his third review, just going to get finals, uh, you know, just a single lot or one acre and an R-one, and. He's got a land and a separation fence that he'll put up and.
What was his comment on the, about the land had been illegally subdivided? Has that been taken care of? I just noticed that it's all been done.
Yeah, yeah. I'm not aware of his having any issues standing out, so it should be good to go. There have been some comments about there being quite a bit of stuff on that lot as it stands. It's kind of, uh, I think his dad was using it to put items on, but. Yeah, but, uh, the son, his name just lost me. Anyway, he, uh, I think it'll get better with him building the home, cause he'll go in there and move some of his dad's stuff around those, you know. It's just been an empty lot, his dad stores a few things on, but not, not terrible, it's not, you know. Just like anyone does with their empty lots, kind of, just doesn't have a structure on it, so it sticks out a little more, but. No real complaints from citizens, we'll see tonight, but I think it's fine.
Should be pretty straightforward, um, so.
Yeah, his, his will be deferred improvements, by the way. Oh, no, no, his will be installed, excuse me. He's gonna install his sidewalk, so he will install a sidewalk, he's fitting a lot, that's our recommendation, at least. There's a, can't remember the name of that subdivision out there, Sherry, you probably know it, Skyview by Swayze. Skyview is, connects right to him, so we just want him to continue the sidewalk, since there's already one that abuts to his lot, yeah, so.
Can, can we back up? I just, uh, can we talk about that daycare, just for a second?
Sure.
Cause like I, so we're okay with the conditional use permit, but like I worry when there's kids, right? Do, do we have to worry about anything like, does there need to be fire suppression in there? Is that just out of our scope, something that's not of our business, that's up to them? Okay, so.
Yeah, they'll still have to get their permit from the state, and the, the state sends out inspectors to make sure all that stuff is, does, they're gonna get their license on that side?
Perfect, okay. That makes me feel better. Sorry, Malcolm.
No, that's great. Listen, you want, like, you're right, with kids, you wanna make sure you take extra consideration, so.
Make sure the fire department does an inspection as well, and the same.
Yeah, Nate will involve, Nate, our building inspector will go through all that, and he does it onsite, so. Anything else on that one?
Nope, I'm good now.
Okay, well, we've got a little bit of time, but we have a couple things that we really wanted to chew on, and I'm really hoping you guys can take them and run with them, and have some data to kinda help discuss it. I wanted to revisit, uh, we brought oversized structures as a discussion point for, you know, the fact that we're processing a lot of them. It seemed like, you know, every meeting we have two or three. And other cities kind of have a different policy, um, which again, I'm not saying it's right or wrong, I just brought it, and there was some interest, it seemed like, to potentially increase our size, or modify our, uh, ordinance, so that we didn't. See, I guess, I guess the spirit of it is that we see every oversized structure, but we never deny them. So in theory, they all get approved, right? And so if we don't, I don't know. So again, that was the thought that we expressed to staff. So Plain City does is no more than twenty-five percent of their rear yard. West Haven does no more than, so your oversized structure can't cover any more than twenty-five percent of your rear yard. So Plain City does it, West Haven does it the same. If they're doing stuff in the side yard, they increase the side yard and the backyard, but Far West is the same twenty-five, or twenty percent of rear yard, you can't cover more than. Um, we do ours more like this. This is what's allowed in the different zones, this range of building. You can see, you know, an R-two can go up to sixteen hundred square feet, and R-three-quarter can go up eighteen, and an R-one can go to two thousand. In my opinion, we're, and we're not my opinion, factually, we're, we're way smaller allowance before we make people come get a conditional use permit. All these other cities, like twenty-five percent of a one-acre lot, rear yard, being conservatives, about sixty-eight hundred square foot shop. We're making anyone over two thousand come in, so I think it's a lot of work to, and it, it's not a big deal, we can fill them that way if you guys want, but we wanted to have a good discussion on it, and then if you guys wanted to make a change, we wanted you guys to be able to kinda help put that together, and I could help, you know, maybe work with Reed and get it, whatever you guys decide you want put into code, and then we could, you know, vote on it as a recommendation or not for the city council, and we could send it up for consideration to increase or change the way we do them, but. Just wanted your guys' thoughts on the process. This last comment from me, and then I hope you guys just dive into it. I initially, and probably overstepping, thought, oh, I'll just write this, right? But probably not my place, you guys really need to decide what you guys want. Um, I'll just give you the data, but, you know, it seems easy to just say, my thought was, oh, I'll just do twenty-five percent like all the other cities, that's a big lot. It's percentage per lot, so it's across the board, even. Only thought there is, you would have situations, most cities don't allow any conditional uses, so if you're over your twenty-five percent, you can't do it, it's just a done deal. And so we would be changed, it'd be a substantial change for Hooper, although we would be increasing the size a ton, and I think ninety percent of them would just be approved. There would be an occasional, I don't know, riding arena for perks, that was like thirty thousand square feet, that we technically wouldn't have code to approve anymore, so. Not sure how you guys would wanna dance around that or not, but anyway, those are my thoughts, so I just wanted to lay that out there, so you guys could discuss it a little.
So if we just like doubled the square footage required to need a initial per, uh, permit, then we would still have that other control if something big came in, right?
Sure.
And that would still cover ninety-nine percent of, people would fall within that, twice as big of square footage, right?
Yeah, can I, maybe I can share the screen with you, and so you can see, cause I, that's a thought, and might be, let me see if you can see, I'm gonna try and share. Uh, I'm old, no, I won't do that. Share this one. Oh geez, there we go. You see that, Sheldon?
It's loading up, yep, there it is.
So in twenty-twenty-three, these were all of our oversize pulled, um, the sizes, so like you said, by doubling it, you might, you could kind of estimate potentially how many you would eliminate application-wise. I can't, I didn't pull the zones, so I guess it's not a hundred percent accurate, meaning if these were R-two zones, and you doubled it, you still, you know, I'm not sure these were all, I think some of them were R-two, some were R-one, obviously, but. I kinda gave you an idea of, like, that was twenty-twenty-three, these were the sizes pulled. See, we had that big outlier, and then, but most of them fell under, all of them fell under sixty-two hundred. And in twenty-twenty-four, all of them fell under four thousand, three, thirty-five hundred, probably. So yeah, that's one thought for sure.
So to clarify for me, if we did, if you did a percentage, if you did twenty-five or whatever percentage, are you, are you saying that we couldn't then allow, if there's a thirty thousand, that commit would be a percentage?
I guess if it was twen- well, you could do it however you want, you could allow for CUPs, but I think that would then get you back to your exact same situation, where anyone who's over the twenty-five percent will just come for their CUP, and you'll always approve it, which is one way to do it. It's just, you know, or as long as they're twenty-five percent, like if they happen to have three or four acres.
Or less, right.
Yeah, if they had a big, huge yard, a full two-acre back, you know, parcel, they would probably still be able to qualify on their own, you know, roughly, I guess. But again, just.
So it's not either or, we could actually do.
A combination of.
Yeah, okay.
Which is what we, can, yeah, yeah.
But we wouldn't have to have each one come in if we did a percentage, right? Unless it was over that percentage, is that, that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, if they, if those are three-quarter acres, most of them, you gotta eliminate a lot of those, them happening to even appear.
Well, it's one of the pros of having them come in, if we're just. Yeah, like, cause technically, if it fits within the ordinance, we're ready, we can. Like, the public can come state their concerns, but if it fits within the ordinance, it's.
I, I like the idea of changing it, it gives them time back, right? They don't have to wait and.
And we're not just.
Especially where they're just going through the motions. If we're approving all of them.
Anyway.
All you're giving is cost, some time and money.
Yeah, you're costing, you're wasting city resources, and I mean, they're still have to follow all the ordinances, setbacks.
If you double, if you doubled ours, if you didn't wanna go the percentage, just cause it's what we're used to, you could, you know what I mean? You could go up to four thousand square feet on one acre, and it's thirty-six hundred on a half, and you'd kind of be accomplishing a similar thing, it's, but, you, I don't know. Or, yeah, or whatever.
I, I like that this gives you more flexibility when the doubling, instead of just a, hey, if it doesn't fit, it doesn't fit.
I'd almost, I guess I would prefer like, here's twenty-five percent, if it's bigger than that, we need to look at it and see exactly what's going on. So I would, I would lean towards the, here's twenty-five percent, for lack of a better term, to, I mean, we're, they're coming and we approve them, it's just more efficient use of our time.
Yeah.
And if there's a giant one, like Burke's case, it's not that that one can't get approved, it just doesn't fall into the stuff.
The automatic approval.
Yeah, the, uh, stuff.
How would the twenty-five percent be calculated? Who, who would you, would you have then draw up a plan, and then, okay, and then that's how it'd be determined?
Yeah, yeah.
Do you guys, do you guys worry at all about like consistency, you know, so you figure, if you've got, you know, if you've got a half acre lot. You've got a four thousand square foot house on it, that's a lot different spacing. A half acre lot with a twelve hundred square foot house, right? So something would fit a little bit differently, how do we keep that consistent, so that if you're yesing or no?
Instead of the rear yard though.
Oh, the rear yard, yeah.
So I guess that kinda limits, like you have a giant house on your half acre lot, that limits to the size of your shed that you could. Put on there, just based off the setbacks and what's available there. So I, I guess that, that feels like that. Setbacks and other things in the, building an oversized structure in the back, I think your house would. Limit that size anyways, cause it has to be, unless you're attaching it to your house.
You could do twenty-five percent and just have agricultural buildings, you know, they could not be required to meet. I would probably open up a lot of your really big shops for some people to do an ag permit, if they, cause then they'd have to have the acreage anyways. To justify it, and they wouldn't be required, but.
Is there an ordinance also with hard surface, so if you have hard surface, a part of it, and then is that gonna interfere if it would be the twenty-five percent? Is that gonna somehow?
And if you're with your impervious surface.
Being calculated into that, or?
Yeah, would need to be calculated into it for sure, yeah, we have a sixty-five percent impervious surface requirement, or you know, maximum.
Of the entire lot?
Of the entire lot can be, yeah.
I, I'm, 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 I'm more into the percentage rather than just doubling that, to me, it's, it's easier than.
True.
So I guess the, I guess cons of doubling is like, you run into the bigger. How does that get approved, or does it just not get approved, right, like that's the, I guess that's the con that I, I could see there, that we'd have to address, but I don't.
I think Sheldon.
They would still get approved, they would just come in.
Yeah.
Yeah, Sheldon's thought there is, like you said, you know, lim- limit, you know, get rid of some of the lower sized applications and still. Through your CUP process, just for bigger ones.
The other thing to keep in mind too is, right now, I mean, we have had a lot of people come in and voice their opinions on these things. And going to the twenty-five percent would allow a lot bigger structures than just doubling there.
Yeah, quite a bit bigger.
I think it would leave, feeling like they didn't have a chance to have their voice heard, or they didn't even notice it was going in, but right now the people have to pay. And have it put on the agenda, but they also are paying to have those notices go out to everybody within six hundred feet, to kinda make them aware. So I feel like if we move to that twenty-five percent thing, a lot of citizens would feel kinda blindsided compared to what they get in the current process.
But why should we as a city be telling somebody what they can and can't put on there? Why are we stepping into that role, like, into that person's private property rights of saying, I wanna put this in there? I guess that's, that's where I lean, is just like, I wanna get out of people's lives as, as much as possible, um. But I, and I understand that people have concerns with them, you gotta talk to your neighbors, like, I don't know. I guess that's where I stand, I mean, they might have a voice, but when it really comes down to that voice, if it fits within the, it doesn't matter anyway, right? We have zero power to do anything other than what the, zero legislative power to do anything other than what is written, so. I can see how that would go both ways, but.
Yeah, I, no, cause I agree with you, I don't wanna get in anybody's backyard, but I, I am concerned that if we. Almost triple the size of what can go in there, just automatically. Without even reviewing it, I don't know.
But you think people are just gonna build bigger, cause they can't build bigger, or?
I don't know.
I know, I think, I think the cost will ultimately dictate that, if people, people can only afford it, I don't. Doubling it could, and again, whatever you guys decide, I'm actually gonna probably push it more towards you to compile this, and I'll, I'll help you draft it and everything, but. You take the spirit of what was discussed and come up with a proposed ordinance, and then you guys can process it. I mean, doubling it could be an easy way, just to at least try something different, it would be really simple, I mean, we could draft that, and you know what I mean, just double things and then. See how it goes for a while, and if we feel like, hey, we're still seeing, you know, a lot, and we're approving all of them, you could try and just go more, you know, we don't wanna see them anymore, you could just do a percentage, and then. Just draw it at that, if you go over that, no, nothing, but, but whatever you, you guys decide.
If you guys wanna email me your thoughts, I'm, but I'm in favor of some sort of increase of what we're seeing.
Yeah, cool. Yeah, maybe if all you can email Jason, so you can compile it, and then you get with me, and I, you know, I can, we can kinda draft something, and then you can bring it to them for presenting it. For like an actual recommendation or not, so it's moving along.
Has there been much pushback in the past of neighbors who are saying, we don't want this, and, and, but is there a lot of negative feedback from that?
Sheldon and, Sheldon and Bryce would probably be your best.
I guess the one that comes to mind is just the one guy that had the health concerns.
Yeah, it's the only one that I can think of in recent history that, that. That wasn't the size thing, it was just the construction.
Yeah, saw the one around Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, when you look at the ones that have been approved, there's not, I mean, there's a couple monsters in there, but.
Sheldon, Sheldon or Bryce, have you guys ever denied one? Is there any precedence for denying them?
We've never denied, we, we, the only thing we've done is, you know, we checked heights on a couple of them, somebody had to come back and get hyped. Basically approved a second time, said it told us it was gonna be as tall as it was. And another one, we asked, we say we knocked it down like a foot, to kinda keep it the same size range, like everyone else has been, and they agreed. So they have been good to have eyes on these things.
And the height requirements would still be in.
Twenty-five foot? That's never been an issue, at least in my limited experience, everyone can keep them under twenty-five foot pretty well, I remember one or two. But it's never been a big complaint from anybody. For the applicants, I don't get a pulse on the citizens, but I don't know if people are upset about the twenty-five foot height, if it's too tall, or, but, and they're, I don't wanna. Alright, well, I don't wanna beat it down, but it sounds like we can compile it, go from there, and I guess kinda again, just to preface this conversation, I don't. Have an opinion or really, it doesn't, you know what I mean, I want you guys to do what you guys wanna do, I just, I have a good pulse on the. Applicants, or I guess you could call it the market, right, I'm in here all day, and I hear people come in and what they think and what they want, and so I just wanna relay stuff to you guys. So we can have a fluid, ever updating, and again, if it gets updated, great, if it doesn't, it, great, if that's what you decide. But I, I at least want you guys to be able to fill what the citizens and comments are, so another one, and we get this one often. Probably one to two a week, pretty consistently, but just to share. Uh, these flag lots, we get a lot of people coming in requesting flag lots, and you guys should all be familiar with them, and but, just not to be patron, patronizing, but uh. Here's an example, I suppose, here's a home, this has got an individual looking to buy this parcel here, um. They uh, would stub in, yeah, buy both, but they would stub a road in to access, not a road, stub a private access, they, they call it a stem. Generally in other ordinances, you put a stem in to access the flag portion of the lot. Um, right now, there's no ordinance to.
Malcolm.
Yeah.
Can you share that screen that you're working off of?
Yeah.
I'm still seeing the one that I'm.
Yeah, sorry, Zoom's the worst at this, you literally have to stop sharing, reshare, I think every time, whenever you switch screens. There you go. You see that one yet Sheldon?
Yep, see you now, thank you.
Yeah, so this, this parcel along with this one, same owner, someone would buy it. You know, have someone with, they would rent, or just, you know, this home would stay, and they would stub a stem and access the, the back portion of the slot. Currently, we don't have any ordinances to support flag lots, so we don't have anything really saying you can't do them, it's not like it's spelled out in code that says, you know, we don't allow. Flag lots, we just don't have any ordinances to support them.
Pretty sure, I'm pretty sure that explicitly says in there, no flag lots, I'm not, like ninety-five percent sure I'm with that.
Okay, so it may do, um. The way that we generally discuss it is, you know, the way that the ordinance is written, that I read is that. All homes need to be on a, have to have the minimum frontage, and they have to be on a fully improved public road, so that'd be sixty foot wide. Curved gutter sidewalk on both sides, so it's similar to like the Fisher property we saw a lot of, where, you know, they wanna access the back, but they don't wanna stub. A full road in for one home, um, so I sent out some ordinances that other cities are doing, um. To, you know, control flag lots, and just at a high level. Um, mo- a couple of the two, so we have West Point, we have West Haven, we have Plain City, two of those three. Use them as like, or uh, process them as conditional use permits, so they don't allow them blanketly, but if they, you know, they have a couple things that. Allow for them, um, things like, if it's landlocked, if, there's kind of a spirit of what controls that, you could read them, but. The spirit of what would allow it is, uh, let's see, special exceptions by the planning commission in any zone, if it's not feasible or desirable. To extend a street, that's kinda how they make their delineation, um, they, the stems are generally twenty foot wide when they go in. They have to, all of them, in my, from my reading, need to be asphalt up to the city code, or spec on asphalt paved. Um, Plain Cities was thirty foot wide, they had landscaping on either side, just to provide a little more of a, I don't know, of appearance. That it wasn't just a carved out of nowhere, um. Asphalt or concrete finish, and then they all called out a turnaround that would need to be fire approved, so turn on that. Some of them, this is the discussion on some of, some of them have like a length restriction, you can't go this far back, but they can. Some of them. Put, put the requirement based off of how close they're to a fire hydrant, so if they're willing to put a fire hydrant in, then they, they can go that far back. Some of them, like West Point requires a fire hydrant within two hundred and fifty feet of them, so they pretty much require one, um. I think West Haven, it was limited there just to five hundred foot stem road, unless you put a fire hydrant in, then you could do more, um. Similar things like that, so you could skim through them, but I guess the thought was, is again, I, nothing for me specifically, I just, I do build a lot of these. Probably at least twice a week, let someone come in and say, I wanna build back here, and it's always the same conversation. You have to be on a fully improved road, you could stub a road in and build a road, and it's always the same reaction, like, there's no way I would put a. Put a, you know, a fully improved public road back there, and then they generally don't want to, so I just wanted to get your guys' pulse on this, and.
One other thing, I think, almost all of those call out, like, it's not a way around to hear multiple lots in a.
Yeah, it's like single dwelling factor, one of those two, I think.
Yeah, I think, yeah, about, up, maximum was two on one stem, but it's not just like, oh, I'm gonna put a flag lot in here and then do.
Yeah, a couple of them too weren't for like development purposes, like, they wouldn't let you do a new subdivision and just do flag lots for the heck of it, it was like, oh, that, it had to be a landlocked. Parcel that was inaccessible otherwise, but those are the spirits of these, but I just wanted to. Similar to the oversized structure, have a discussion, see if there's any interest, if there is, I can kinda solidify it more, and then we could have another discussion, then put it together for a, a recommendation or not. But again, I don't know what you guys think of allowing them or not, just curious.
Often are yous, are you, something coming in?
Probably twice a week, probably on average, yeah, one to two a week. Yeah. So it would be probably a good amount of single family homes, it would open up a big, you know, I would imagine we'd get a few on these, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be something we approve, and then we only see one or two a year. I bet we'd see, well, one or two a year maybe, cause that's about all the single family homes, we have a long process for approval, but. Yeah, we would see flag lots, we wouldn't approve, you know, put ordinance, and then I'll see if people would utilize it, it's, there's.
Other pieces like the part that's stemming from, it has to be substantially bigger, like it has to be at least. I read somewhere like this, a lot of those have like a size on how big that flag lot had to be.
Yeah, generally, the lot has to be one hundred plus percent, normally like one hundred and twenty-five or one hundred and fifty percent larger than. The zone it exists in, so if you're in an R one, you generally are gonna have to have like one and a half acres to access it.
Stand, does the stand getting?
The stem doesn't get included, not included, and I don't know what the idea behind that is, your guess is probably, you guys might, but there's probably some logic, but they all did call out. You know, about one twenty-five percent of the general zone, it needs to be there, so.
So, uneducated question, so currently on this one, that dirt road would be just, who owns that, that's just an easement right now, right? To that back piece of property?
Well, the, this one, and not that this one's, the, is just one example, but this person owns this parcel and this one separately.
Okay.
Um, but I've just, for sake of discussion, it would be one parcel, right, and they'd wanna access, well, it'd be. Two, but they'd wanna access back here, and couldn't, right, because of the way it's set up.
That, that stem would end up belonging to that bigger piece of property, okay?
Yeah, and that is a good question, I guess I didn't think of that, if they have to, if you don't own both.
Yeah, if you don't own both.
Well, I guess you would generally own the stem, yeah Sheldon?
Can you click on that property or mouse it off? So if they had to give up that stem to the bigger property, does that mean that that house, that property would fall below one acre?
We'd have to moderate, we'd have to make so they, they couldn't, right, that'd have to be required, you couldn't adjust it so that you fell under our zoning, so they'd only be able to give up. Point one nine acres, it, it theoretically, if that was the case on this one.
Or get a rezone, too, if possible.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be my only concern, is who owns the stem, and then, cause it's fine if it's family members building houses behind it, but what happens when somebody tries to sell, or?
This one might not have been the best example, I'd say a lot of the times, a lot of the times, they're lacking frontage, and they'll just be like a typical Utah shaped lot. And they'll be like, oh, I got eighty foot of frontage here, and you can't build a home, you need, or put a road in, you get all your frontage, and they don't want to, but there are something like this, I'm sure.
I, I would think it's something to consider, just because it opens up. One for kids building on dad's land easier, if that's what they wanted to do, um.
I think to recall this being a big discussion probably seven or eight years ago, I believe Ryan Hill was on the planning commission at times. So he would be a good person to talk to, because I felt like he had a lot of good input on this, also because he's the postmaster general.
Yeah.
And it seems like getting addresses for flag lots was like a nightmare for them to deal with too. Which I think is part of the reason, probably one of the main reasons behind why they.
Yeah, most of those, most of the, most of the ordinances have called out like a specific, like your mailbox has to be accessible from the main road. All that sort of stuff, I know it might be hard to get a mailbox, but I don't think the government not giving out mailboxes should be, should hinder me wanting. What I wanna do with my property, and I don't have to have the mailbox.
I don't think that the mailbox is the issue, Jason, to be real here, is address numbers is the issue. I've got two flag lots next to each other, and mine, my address is, and so that eight, my neighbors are the six. And what fits in between there?
They'd have to readdress, but.
But I don't think that's a complicated problem that they haven't figured out in like New York, or some of these other bigger cities, like.
It'd be a good conversation to have with Ryan, though, just pick his brain on it.
That's why I said it would be worth talking to Ryan Hill, he knows a lot about this, see what he thinks.
What was the consensus at that point, does anybody know?
Well, they just didn't allow it.
I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure that's who they put in the ordinance, there was no flag lots.
No flag lots. I think we need to work, at least look at for sure.
I would, I would like looking at it. Brian would be a great person to talk to, and see where they were, or why they decided to go against it, or what the issue, what issues they were facing then and. The issues now.
Yeah, cause that could open up a lot of ground for people to build on.
Refresh my mind, Malcolm, did you have West Haven in there as well, if you did?
Yeah, West Haven's in there.
Okay, I, I thought so, cause I, I know they struggled with it like five or six years ago, it was a big deal. But I, I think we need to look, definitely look at it, complicated.
Bryce, Travis, what were your guys' thoughts on it, maybe you shared your thoughts on it, but would you wanna look into it more, or?
Yeah, I, I, well, that's, I like the idea of, of absolutely looking at it, but yeah, I'd love to talk, pick Ryan's brain. And find out what they were thinking before. Cause I like the idea of giving somebody an opportunity to put a house, you know?
I think it's a good idea to talk about, there's a lot of weird pieces of property around town that it would open up.
True, Sheldon, you, uh, what are your thoughts on pushing it more to try and get some type of, at least recommendation put forward for consideration?
I'm okay with it, I just think we just gotta understand why we didn't have them in the past, and make sure we're not gonna put ourselves into. Having issues that we had solved previously by other, and so, but there's bound to be people out there that can benefit from it, and so I'm. I'm totally open to the idea. There's bound to be people out there that can benefit from it, and so I'm, I'm totally open to the idea.
Guess one of the issues is how most of those are written in the spirit, it could persuade something as like, oh. You gave it to him, like a favoritism thing, as you're using different, unless those are spelled out really clear and ordinance. That you can follow that way, but.
Yeah, keep it consistent.
Yeah.
I agree.
But just, just so you know, the way that stuff was built out now, because we can't have the flag lots. When you develop something, you're not allowed to landlock a piece of ground, so. The way things have been put in the past, that's why stub roads are put in, all those sorts of things, so that these. These of the ground can be accessed and not have to use flag lots, so I think we would just need to make sure that we're not. Like I said, putting ourselves in a position where we're basically forcing people to have flag lots because they're not. Doing the due diligence on like planning correctly for subdivisions that we've been doing the past eight years or more.
Yeah, I, I personally, and this is just my opinion, and you guys could maybe have a different, I wouldn't wanna do any new development that. Wouldn't require, you know what I mean, it would have to be something that's already landlocked or, right, I don't think I would ever allow people, or personally wanna. Subdivide in that nature, assuming it's, you know, avoidable, I think it would have to only be existing landlocked, well, landlocked pieces, difficult to access.
Yeah, that example you put up there is a perfect one for that, if they wanna sell off that back parcel, nobody could build anything on that right now. Unless we had allowed the flag lot.
So like if you think of the Perez property where he pulled off like that one acre.
Yeah.
If you look at the, the frontage of that, they made it, I think already deed over the sixty feet for, to the city. Of frontage on that property, so that eventually to get to the back part of that lot. They can put a full road in to get to the back of it, so that, that's one of my big concerns, is making sure we're not gonna. Set things up where they have to have flag lots versus just being proactive, make sure that we're doing stuff that we have been recently.
Let's say consensus is, we wanna explain.
We need to look at.
So, Malcolm, if you want us to talk to Ryan first and get his feedback, or before you start diving in and doing that?
Yeah, it'd probably be great if one of you reached out to Ryan and just let me know what his thoughts were, so we don't revisit or. Do a bunch of work and then take it up to them and they're like, this is exactly why we don't want them, and we're like, oh, we didn't know that, but uh. Um, otherwise, I mean, and again, I guess, kind of funny enough, as we talk about updating ordinance, I can't say that I'm familiar with. And Bryce and Sheldon might have comments on a really robust process for how we wanna handle things like this, um. I mean, there's, you know, how we wanna go about updating these, um. If we can do it, just like I'm doing it, kind of express to you guys what I'm hearing, if you guys have interest, then we could collaboratively. You know, uh, draft something and then you guys could recommend it to city council, I think would probably be the process and then. There'd probably be a little bit of discussion there and they would try to vote, you know, eventually on it. Does that sound like a decent process and something that we could do and would be effective?
I think so, I think your boots on the ground, do you have the best? I guess input from the citizens?
Communication's great, you're on the front lines and, that, that, cause I don't, I mean, I don't think anybody here knows, and then you, what's, I think it's great. Great that you communicate that to us and help us to help the citizens.
Okay, well, we can, um, I'll work with Jace then to. See if we can't draft something and then we'll try and, if you can get Ryan's con, your commentary and we'll try and make sure that's part of it and then. You guys can discuss it, hopefully at your next meeting have something for sure on the oversized structures, cause we've been talking about that one for a little bit, hopefully on the flag lots, but. We'll see, it's a full month, we should be able to get them both, but the flag lot one, the oversized structure one could be pretty simple, as you saw. The uh, flag lot, the flag lot one is normally a page of ordinance for each. City, so it's something to consider, but we could work on it for sure. Okay. Okay Sheldon, I'm gonna shoot over to the other meeting if you can use that other link.
Yeah, I'll jump on right now, thanks for talking.
Yeah, thanks Sheldon. Yeah, I can, I have a few slides, I can shoot through, um, but no, not, yeah, I'll shoot through some slides on all of them, but.
Recording in progress.
I'd like to welcome you all out to our June twelfth, twenty twenty-five planning commission. Meeting, Commissioner Corrick will be conducting. To begin our meeting, we'll have a pledge allegiance led by Commissioner Larson and then a prayer given by Commissioner Woodson. And we'd also like to excuse Commissioner Severing and Commissioner Prince.
We are, it's Christmas right, and P D F D. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. Thank you to the government for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and just as for all.
Father of heaven, grateful we can be here tonight, uh, be here as a community and. Have a planning commission meeting, we pray that we can have a good meeting and, uh, be able to. Listen and understand and, uh, pray that, uh. When the time comes, we can travel to our next destination safely. Grateful for all that we have, grateful for this big community that we live in. We're grateful for those who serve protect our community and our country, pray that. Uh, beds and families would be blessed, pray for those in our community and surrounding areas who are in need at this time. Whether it be health or, uh, other needs, pray for them and that they may receive what they're. What they need, we say these things in Jesus Christ, amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Washington and Commissioner Severing. Now go into the consent items, we have the minutes from last week, does any of you see anything? Any issues with those minutes? No issues, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Make a motion to approve the planning commission meeting minutes, uh, dated May eighth, twenty twenty-five.
I have a motion from Commissioner Woodson to approve the planning commission minutes dated May eighth, twenty twenty-five, do I have a second?
A second motion.
There was a second from Commissioner Larson, Larson? Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next on our action items, we'll go into the conditional use permit for. Cashmere Tomlin for a daycare located at thirty-nine twenty-eight South, fifty-three fifty West. I'll turn some time over to staff for some information.
Hello.
Alright, so we have a conditional use permit here, uh, I think it's over in Morning Meadows, did you see that address there? If you're more familiar with Morning Meadows, here's the site plan, kinda lays out, you can see the star right place here, that's where the, they're calling it a schoolhouse for the daycare. Um, it'll be twenty-five by thirty foot, um, which is well within the zoning, um. Got a, the setbacks have been checked for rear inside there and they need the, the accessory structure setbacks, um. Terms of plumbing, it will have plumbing, um, if you see on the floor plan there shows a bathroom, um, and then. There will be electrical ran to it, um, we did have a discussion or meeting, we might have talked with the applicant, I think they're gonna, um. Climate control, it'd be a mini splits, so pretty straightforward that way. Um, the usage, well, here's a couple of ran ranges, this is roughly what the, some elevation drawings, what the structure will look like. Um, here's your floor plan, um, to give you an idea, uh, our ordinance I listed here, just for the home group. Um, daycare, we have a few that it could have fallen under, but they seem to fit in, uh, the best. Um, the schedule provided by that, we can, it's also listed there, um, ten students in an AM shift, eight to eleven and ten students in a PM shift, twelve to three. More than ten students at a time, um, which looks like it falls within that ordinance there, just wanted to provide that for planning commission and that was everything. I believe that was considered well, so.
Thank you. If that comes here, which we, for, they come forward, you just state your name, you don't have to state your address, but. And then kinda tell us why you wanna have a daycare?
Well, I have books for you, can I come up there?
Sure.
Still formal.
Thank you.
Sorry, we can't write pictures, this is how I roll, so bear with me. Alright, so my name's Cashmere Tomlin, uh, I call by Cash. Um, I've started an LLC called the Kinder Coop. I used to teach kindergarten public schools and for the last couple of years I've been helping my kids because of the things that I experienced in the public schools. I'd like to create an option for families that they can send their kids to kindergarten half day in a play-based. Blended academic environment where they can stay, play outside more, do more hands-on, um. And still be able to spend the rest of their day with their family, so that's kind of what I'm trying to do in a nutshell. So if you open your book there, the first tab you'll see is my teaching license, I've been a licensed educator since two thousand fourteen. And I've taught in two different states, I hold a license in both of those, you taught in Washington. I also turned to my background check today, which is A O K, um, so we're good there, and then I've also been working with the labor fire department to get my CPR. Uh, first aid training updated this summer, uh, the next is my resume, you can see I have a lengthy, uh. Lengthy resume of experience in all different aspects of school, ranging from preschool all the way to middle school. Um, I did include a sample mini lesson, uh, just so you can kinda see the type of teacher I am. Uh, I think I'm pretty excellent, but, um, we'll have to see what my kinders say. I work really hard to create very engaging differentiated lessons for my students, um, it matters, they matter. And I really wanna bring that kids playing, it's, there's such as heavy emphasis on technology and my school won't have any. My only tech that'll have is most likely an interactive board for the teacher use that will be for more work primarily. Otherwise, everything is hands-on, we're getting dirty, we'll be learning lots of different life cycles, um, I have eleven chickens. Uh, going feeding them, harvesting eggs, weekly we'll pick student, I guess, take eggs home, um, things like that, just creating. Knowledge that's naturally there instead of so synthetic, lots of worksheets. The next tab is just a little bit about the Kinder Coop, like Malcolm said, we're gonna be doing an AM and a PM option. Uh, and that's the flyer that I posted in preschool, so I've already kind of gone around and checked in with them, like, hey, have you, what have you heard from parents? After they leave preschool with you, and many of them are like, they don't want to send their kid. If there was another option, they would jump on it, and even some of them were like, I have three kids that, like, three parents right now, can they call you, and I'm like, not yet. Please, not yet, so I'm only gonna take ten, I've spoken with the state, um, I've talked to the Department of Licensing, see if that's where I'm getting my license. And they were like, nope, you're good, kindergarten isn't actually required by the state of Utah, so there's nothing that I need to do there, although I do have it, so that's. Great, and then I talked with the Health and Human Services and because it is kinder, similarly. It's considered this homeschool option and it doesn't, they don't require anything for me, although I will be making sure. That I have done what I need to do, what I feel is appropriate, background checks, CPR, first aid, all those things on my own. But this tape doesn't actually require anything of me, and I double checked on that, and then today I went around to my neighborhood, you'll see. Uh, just kind of a little detailed sheet that, uh, just to inform my neighbors, some of them. Called me or text me and said they're in support of this, but, but they weren't able to come, but they did have a few questions on, well, like, how many kids and. When, so put this together and went ahead and dropped it off on my entire street today. The next tab you'll see is just a sample of kinda what Malcolm said, it's Monday through Friday, there's an AM option and a PM option, I'm very flexible on these times. So if my neighbors or the community is like, hey, you really would prefer, could you do eight-thirty to eleven-thirty, then yes, like. But I'm trying to be mindful of parents who are also dropping their other children off at the school hours, trying to give them time to get wherever else they need to, but they're not set in stone. They're very flexible, but I will stick to the hours, the state just requires I stay under four. Um, the business tab you'll see, I do have an LLC form for the Kinder Coop, um, so that's all good to go, and I have been getting insurance books. Also, there is a program called Open Ed and Utah gets all, Open Ed used to be a homeschooling program, so my tech high, we've now transitioned. Um, and they allow two thousand dollars per student, per academic year, all the way from kinder to twelfth, that parents can actually use. To let me teach their child, so there's some state allowance that they can have some funding to be able to pay me. And the same with Utah gets all, that's. That scholarship is being transferred to Odyssey, so there's a little movement right there, but I've spoken with both and they're both on board to work with parents so that I can be their provider to teach their kids. If you turn to the website, well, you'll see just, this is exactly what I have up on my website. A little bit about me, we call it Inside The Coop and Outside The Coop because my schoolhouse is gonna be positioned right next to my chicken coop. And then again, the AM and PM options. I have this website live, but I do not have a leak activated yet. So we can decide if that's something I can pursue before I take out kids. I am actively looking into child management software, like Brightwill and things of that nature, so I can send pictures to parents throughout the day of what their kids are doing. Am I going too fast? Okay, great. And then if we turn to the next page, I threw Malcolm a little branch today. I was working with the engineer yesterday and I was like, you know what, I really want a closet. So, when he showed his slightly different, this one will have a walk-in closet because I have a lot of hand materials. It will have a sink and a very nice mount counter, lots of storage there. And then a bathroom that will have an exit on the exterior of the building, so where outside the children can safely go into the restroom without entering the school, so I can see them at all times. I can see who's going in and who's going out. It will be white with a black door and a black roof. And we have a massive shop already that it will match. Onto the site plan, you can kind of see there, there will be a playground added. We will have a mud pit with lots of cool toys, trucks. Call it imagination stations, where there'll be pipsy pipes and lots of cool things that kids can build ramps or just whatever, however they want to use their mind, play in the dirt, buildings can be struck, tear them down, cause and effect, that will be there as well as a mud kitchen. And then in front of this schoolhouse, you can see those little rectangles, those are garden beds. So it will be a fully functioning, interactive garden. The children will be planting, they'll be harvesting, and then they can even pot it, take it home, plant some more. It's a freerying, they'll have their own long beds to grow things. Because kindergarten science is a lot about the life cycle of the plant. So instead of doing more cheats, I probably just teach them in real life. And then at the very end, you'll see parking. When I was trying to figure out if this would even work, I looked into a commercial space and realized, I can't afford to do that. And then I looked into, a lot of these people do like a shed on their property. I didn't want to do that. I don't want it. I don't want like a makeshift classroom, I want to be proud of where these kids are coming every day. I want them to feel safe, as if it's just like a classroom. I have nothing wrong with that in a school, it's a beautiful place and I want to just like make it more alive. So it'll be tronic structure, the only concern I had was parking. So I, my kids go to the Vicky and they have nailed it with our parking. They line cones up, five cones, five cars pull in, five kids get out. Those five cars pull up, the next five pull in, those kids get out and drop-off pickup is less than five minutes. And that's for an entire school. So for ten kids, I'm estimating under five minutes. And I have spoken with any neighbors that may be laggaring the trail of cars and they're fine with it and they're here tonight, so if you'd like to ask them about that as well. But that kind of gives you a visual of how I'll set up drop-off and pickup. I'll be out there, I will collect my students and we'll walk back to the schoolhouse. Upon pickup, I will walk them back to the street and help them proceed to their cars. Is that all, Mr.? Do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I have a comment. Awesome, what a great presentation, you're so prepared and I just compliment you on what you've done. It's awesome. Thank you.
Any other questions? Sheldon, do you have any questions? Nope. Thank you. Now enter a public hearing. At this time, any residents can come forward. You have a three-minute time limit to state your name. You don't need to state your address and voice any comments, concerns that you have.
Would it be okay if I add a little bit of commentary, just so they... Yeah, so feel free to open your public, I just wanted to add just a touch of commentary. We'll put up a site plan, just so people know, and this is what we're talking about. This one's Kimball Estates.
Hang on, we're still on the...
Oh yeah, for the public hearing, yeah.
Oh.
I'll leave that up for their public, so they can kind of see what they're talking about. But yeah, after we go back to that, but we're getting on, so here's our site plan, here's the sheet, okay. So this will be Kimball Estates and again, I'll go, so they can do their public hearing, I'm not skipping it.
No, we got it built on her.
Oh, excuse me. Yeah, I am ahead of you, sorry. Go right in.
Okay, so we're first gonna enter in a public hearing for Kash, Kashina?
Kashina.
Kashina, sorry. Tomlin, for the daycare located at thirty-nine twenty-eight South, fifty-three fifty West. Any residents wanting to step forward and make a comment, may do so now.
Hello, my name is Heather Bartik. My husband and I live two doors south of the Tomlins. First and foremost, we believe that individuals have the right to do what they want with and on their own property, so as long as it isn't infringing on the other individual's ability to do the same. While I certainly understand and respect the views of others who are in opposition, my husband and I are in full support of the Tomlins and Kash's dream to have a private kindergarten. We expect to enroll our ten-month-old daughter when she is of age and, God willing, any more children we are able to have. Prior to moving to Utah a few years ago, my husband and I lived in the suburbs of New York. We left New York in search of a community that was a better place to begin a family. In New York, you could spend a decade living next door to someone and still not know your neighbors. We didn't like that. We strongly believe that a local private kindergarten operated by a person we know and trust builds up and is a net positive for our budding community. We don't want our neighborhood that our daughter grows up in to be comprised of just a collection of physical buildings where people spend the time between work shifts. My hope is that we can grow our community into a friendly, pleasant, and self-sufficient place to raise a family. For that to happen, every community needs small businesses to support it. We can't think of a better way to invest in our local community than by starting with the education of its most important members, our children. Thank you.
So, my name is David Russell and my wife Maria Russell is here with me. We live directly next door to the Tomlins and we were unfamiliar with this request until receiving the notice last week. And I have spoken to some other neighbors about this, some positive, some not so positive. But I, as I drafted this input, I'm getting conflicting details of how large of a project this is. And when I spoke, I called the Hooper City Recorder, Morgan, and I think she gave me an indication that it was gonna be just a small group of like three to four students. And, but I did hear from a neighbor that was more consistent with this, where there would be ten students in the, you know, morning and afternoon. And that's the kind of the biggest factor, whether we would object to it. And for us to support this, the limit would have to be like three to four kids a day. And even if the permit specifies a limit, we would still be concerned that the school could grow as time passes. And this is the primary reason we object to having a school next door. When we bought our home, we chose an area that we believed would be a quiet area away from businesses. We contacted the real estate agent that we most recently worked with. According to him, not only will a school next door depreciate the value of our home, negatively impacting our resale values, but we're required to disclose to any potential buyers that there's a school immediately next door that's under a conditional use permit. And our realtor stated our neighbors need to rent a space that's owned for school. The added noise and traffic would not only adversely impact our quality of life but as well as the quality of life of our, of other neighbors, but it would add liability. A child slipping and falling in the sidewalk could easily result in a lawsuit. Many neighbors might be hesitant to speak up, even though they object. Most citizens wish to get along with their neighbors and might be afraid to object to something like this that another neighbor wants to do, especially in a public forum like this. Like us, they always to protect their environment and I hope I speak for them. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you.
I tweaked my back a little bit earlier, so. So I'm Scott Slade, my wife is Caitlin Gillet Slade, she's out there. We have a little one-year-old boy. We live just south of Josh and Cash and kind of apparently something. So we're, like I said, we're driven neighbors and have gotten to know Josh and Cash over the last year and a half. And they've always been gone above and beyond to be considerate to us as neighbors and friends. They're a very respectful family who has very strong values and experience in the educational field. As our education system has gotten more politicized and changed each year, I couldn't think of a more safe, caring, and knowledge-rich environment than a kindergarten ran by Cash. As parents of young child ourselves, we'll be first in line to register our little boy as he comes to kindergarten age. Hooper's a strong community rooted in, rooted in family, Christian, and American values. So why wouldn't we want our kids to be taught by a woman who upholds and teaches these strong values we so desperately desire our public school systems to teach? So, I mean, I implore you guys, take a minute, maybe later, go visit with them and get to know Josh and Cash because they're some of the best people in our communities that you would want to teach our children. We've had extensive conversations with Josh and Cash about their values. Cash has plenty of experience as a teacher herself in the public school system and we've had great conversations that would lead me to believe that she'd be a great teacher and this would be a great place for kids to learn, especially, I mean, we have a little one-year-old boy. When he turns five, I know he's gonna be a little alien. So I can't imagine a better place for him to learn, learn than to outside, be in this kind of small environment and also where I can keep a good eye on him right over the fence. So, I just want to give my opinion on that as we're the closest neighbors, you know, very close to Josh and Cash. And that we would love for them to have this little school, to have little kids learn from them.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Now close the public hearing and proceed with the bring back to planning commission for discussion and motion.
So, I do have one question about the parking. I like the queue in front. Our little boy went to a preschool like that, I've been yelled at for not doing it properly. Now, you, a lot. Where you got first by cars, where are cars, if you have six through ten, where are they queuing? Yeah, can you, I'm sorry, thank you.
Alright, so Scott. As we just chatted, I've already checked in with them, like, hey, while those kids are in, like, are you aware that these cars are gonna be in front of your driveway? And they both have said, yep, we're good, not a problem at all. So they will run that.
And then for safety reasons, the kids like, I'm sure there are some kids that they stay in the car and put it in front of your house and then you walk into that house.
Exactly. Unless they are in a parked car at a home, they do not exit the vehicle. They will not be exiting in front of their yard at all.
Okay, thank you.
I guess my only, I guess my comment would be, it's kind of setting out. It does fit as far as growth goes as the ordinance or what she's applying for, the conditional use permit for the daycare. Wouldn't allow it to grow for more than the twelve individuals per those time slots. So I guess I view, like, I understand his concerns. I feel like the ordinance that he's, not ordinance, but the conditional use permit she's applying for kind of fits the use that she's laid out in her plan that she presented today. Those are my only comments. No other comments, I'll undertake a motion for the conditional use permit for Ms. Tomlin for the daycare located at thirty-nine twenty-eight South, fifty-three fifty West.
I'll make a motion to approve the conditional use permit for Kashina Tomlin located at thirty-nine twenty-eight South, fifty-three fifty West.
We have a motion made by Commissioner Woodson to approve the daycare located at thirty-nine twenty-eight South, fifty-three fifty West. Do we have a second?
All second.
Second from Commissioner Green, Commissioner Greener. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll now enter the public hearing for, first we'll give staff a little bit of time for some information on the Kimball Estates subdivision located at the parcel listed for the MRK three group. So I'll turn some time over for Malcolm.
Yeah, sorry about that, I got a little heavy, you guys there. But yeah, we've been, we're on a third review officially of Kimball Estates. They're in a process of getting final letters of approval to come, bring them to you. As mentioned, the UDOT approval is the one they're working on, but it looks like it's gonna work out just fine. We're just getting that in place that, as this UDOT does, that they're just following to make sure that they're, get their conditional access. It's a twenty-one lot subdivision, it's in our future land use, ours, seven-five, point seven-five, or three-quarter acre. I think we mentioned in our work region, it's our first three-quarter acre, it's a new zone for us. So staff is excited about it and applicants is, you know, complying with our ordinances and so far the reviews have gone really pretty seamlessly. And so, once we get it approved, we feel pretty confident we'll need everything. But per your request, I want to make sure I have the ability to get public heard at this meeting. It's over around fifty-nine hundred by Burn Church, just to add some context. And we can leave this site plan up so people can kind of see what the way out will be.
Thank you, Malcolm. We'll now enter a public hearing to see the public input on the Kimball Estates request. Again, if you want to make comment, you have a time limit of three minutes. It can come up to state your name, you'll have to state your address. So anyone who has any comment, feel free.
I'm Bill Anderson, hi. We live just north of this property and so my interest is, as that's still, the property that we have that's adjacent there is still farmed, growing off alf and grass. My curious, my interest is, what's the access? You know, along the north side of that property, there's a, I'll call it a two-track road that's been, you know, since the ditch was put there sixty-some odd years ago, probably a hundred years. You know, people have, before the ditch was there, it was just a earthen ditch. How do people get to the head gate and turn on the water? My understanding, talking to Chris Miles, is that they're not gonna have access down that north side that will come in from the, from the east, but I don't understand how that will be as they don't, you know, as the property owners will not have access from fifty-one hundred, fifty-five hundred. That's my question. I guess the other question is, is that, are we able to, are they gonna pipe that ditch? I assume that, I assume that that ditch will be piped, so that's, that's a question. Will it be piped and how far? You know, is it just this area or is it from the, from the Hooper Ovation Canal all the way to the state highway? Those are my questions.
Thank you, Eddie.
Do you want me to answer those?
Sure.
Yeah, I should, I would like to help.
This is the applicant.
Yeah. I'm Kyle Davis.
I was hoping we'll actually use your staff help. Could I have some help, my technique, see, just so I can clarify, I didn't follow the entire con... Please give you another minute, I'll give you a pointer here, if you kind of... I'll give you a pointer here. If you can kind of, let me make sure I fully, yeah, I wanna make sure that we understand exactly what you're talking about. Will you be a little laser pointer and we'll help you indicate where we're talking?
This will be fun.
Yeah.
Yes, if you just kind of reiterate that and add a little context, so I can follow back to where you're talking. That bottom one, very bottom?
Thanks. Alright. My problem is right here. And so currently there's a, you know, the canal, you know, runs right here that we get our water from. And so today, you know, we, there's a road, I'll call it a, you know, there's a road, two-track road, you know, it goes all the way up here to that corner and has for a long, long time. And then, and then walk this far and turn on, turn on the head gate. There's a head gate that comes out of the, out of the, out of the used ditch that goes, you know, so we can water this field and there's a head gate water here, we can water this field. And certainly down the road, you know, we envision at some, some point, this may be incorporated into a subdivision. And I'm here to make sure that there's, you know, my, my interest is making sure that there's downright, right meaning that it's, you know, there's access to be able to, you know, I don't envision this being farmland forever. And so that's my question is how do we get to that head gate right there, turn it on, without walking across other ditch property, as that road's been there a long time? And will this be piped? And will the pipe go clear up to here? I think those are my two questions.
The, one question, is there a right, I guess, where does that right away, is that an easement that that road is on? Or where does that?
I guess I don't, I don't know how that works, other than that it's been there for, you know, it's, I remember the term, but it's, it's been there a long time and it's never been disputed, but that's, that. I can, I guess, no, not only does that, that ditch, do I use it, but all the people down, down west here, you know, a half a mile or a mile further down, does that ditch continues down here and goes west and provides water to them as well? And so.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, give me all context, I need, thank you.
Kyle Wood, if you have some commentary, then I'll grab it.
Yep. And so I'm, I'm Kyle Davis with MRK three group. And so with that access on that road, there's not an easement currently on the land. But we want to work with everybody and makes, nobody likes that growth, especially when it's next door, but it's, it's going to happen. And so we want to make sure that we do have the best that we can to make it still work with everybody in the community and it's not just a, ever sticking these in, it doesn't matter. And so I did, I'm out and drove with Rick Miles, who lives across the street. And he's with, with Hopeper Irrigation. And so we, and so we drove that and came up with, that's the bottom one. And so right now runs along this right here. And so instead of having an easement in the backyard of all of these lots, the access is gonna be through this road here. And then there'll be a 15, a 15-foot easement along the east side of this lot right here. That then will be, be access for getting all the way back there. And so they'll drive down this road and then this will be their access to get in. And we'll make sure that there's enough room to turn, cause my understanding that every other year they gotta go back there with a backhoe or something and clean the ditch out. And so it will be enough that they can, I can get a backhoe back there or, or a skid steer dump truck or whatever. And the buyer of this lot will know that that, that is there. And then if they can't fence this off or block this or anything, it'll be an easement. And it's not just an easement, it's an access easement, it has to be accessed through there at all times. So that's our plan on that. With the piping, the pipe starts here at our, at our property line. And we have a head gate that's over here that I didn't know where you wanted it. And so, so basically our plan is to, I'll get with you and wherever you want, we'll stick it wherever you want that, that valve at, is where we'll put it. It doesn't matter to me where it goes, obviously. We wanna make sure that you have all the access that you need and it's right where you want it. And we'll stick it wherever you want it and then, and then we'll pipe it all the way out to the road.
There are currently two.
Is there two? Yeah. And so, and so if we need to do, do I need to come up to?
Ask me a little bit? My next question is, considering that you're, you know, down the road, when our property becomes more civilized.
Mr. Adam, nobody can hear.
It has a mic, sorry. It's recording, so. Thank you. So looking down the road, I guess my interest is making sure that we have, I noticed the road that goes to the north, you know, from the main road. And it steps off there with the intent that, that some, that some future day, you know, that, that we do come to terms, that there will be some further development there. I suspect that I'll need to have a third head gate so that I can water the park, but I don't, so. How do I, how do I work out that?
Um, I don't know exactly how to work that out, but we can, can talk about that.
Okay.
And talk with our engineers. I'm not an engineer, so I'm not gonna be like, oh, we can do this and that.
Okay.
Uh, that's an engineer question, so that's, that's what you can ask him and figure that out and see what he's, so he has to do that.
Next question is, you know, along the state highway, will that, will that drain ditch be filled and piped?
No, so we're actually running all of our, all of our storm drain, I'm using my microphone. That's all of our storm drain. It actually goes across the street and runs this way. And then there's an outfall that's like a thousand feet, um, south on this road. And so it'll go, it'll go across the street and then it'll all be, it'll all be all piped in the ditch and down to the outfall. And so this, the ditch over here will remain exactly the same as it is now.
That drain ditch actually, it's surprising, but that drain ditch actually flows north from that point.
Yeah.
And that goes through the river from.
Yeah.
You're gonna have to put a nice slope where it goes, comes back.
Yeah, so we get, so we get down to the outfall, you have like 11 feet. And the options were either to do it this way, which is like a thousand feet, or to go the other way. Cause if we go up the other way, it's gotta be all the way down that state road, and so it was like a mile. And so we decided to run across and down this way and get our slope prepared.
To be clear, you're saying that that drain ditch on the state road will remain as it is right?
Mm-hmm. And none of our, and none of our storm drain will go into the drainage either. So we won't add any more into the ditch? Uh, it'll be whatever it is right now is in the future.
That's kind of cool, that would be curb and gutter.
Yep. Yeah, we tried, but you wanted us to go all the way to the next.
The city, the city actually recommended this method of drainage. It was preferred for the city to take that route. So, so we have a, we have a system that our engineer put together that'll make sure that when it goes to the outfall, it's all okay to go through into the slope. That way it'll be just a better system for us to maintain and look at. And it also reduces maintenance retention basis, so. So. So what you're proposing is that that, that drain ditch that right now is just an eyesore of displaced garbage and such off the road, you know, that's gonna remain after this subdivision is built or remain for the next hundred years or so until the city puts, puts money into it to clean it up? That's, I don't think that's a good idea.
Yeah, that's, uh, the city wanted us to run across the street and.
It can still, no, it can still go across the street, but you know, there could still be curb and gutter on this side to, so that eyesore of a drain ditch is not there, you know? All it is right now is just tires and dead animals.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm JD Stubbs. I'm Roseanne Bates's daughter and I reside on her property right here on 5100. So I have a couple of questions. My first question is, will you bring up the picture, the current image? So all of the surveys that we have and our understanding of the property line between these two properties, there used to be, if I remember right, a ditch on the other side because there was a, um, there was a water ahead of, what's it called? So, yeah, irrigation, I totally forgot the word. But anyway, up in that top right, the northeast corner. And then there was an irrigation canal that ran behind to feed those properties. And the fence was on our side, so all of our surveys show our property line on the other side of our fence. And if I remember right, and Mel, maybe you remember better, but I think that there was a ditch there, wasn't there? I'm kidding. But if, I've, I've asked my mom, but I, anyway, so, but, but all of our surveys show the property line up up there. Is your property line and your engineering going with the fence line or is it going with the survey line?
It's on the survey line.
Okay. And then my other question is, there was some discussion of a berm from our property to protect water from going into this subdivision. Can you tell me what you guys, what's happening with that?
That's right now, it's just.
The city got rid of the berm.
Okay.
Every property owner has the responsibility to maintain their own, right, outflow. And so then adding this residential, you know, you guys would have the responsibility to maintain the water on your, your property, even if it does go over there now, so.
Was the berm, was the berm on our side or their side? Yeah.
Oh, it's an existing berm?
There's just been there.
If it's on your side, it'll stay. The berm I was specifically talking about was more on the, um, let's see, was more on the east side and the south side, I believe. But they don't last in residential use. The homeowners always remove them and, you know, landscape around them. And so they're, in theory, they're, they, they're nice, but as soon as the homeowners take it over, the berm in there are not gonna stay and then we don't have access to go build that berm back up. So it can't be a solution on a homeowner's lot because we don't, we don't have access to deal with that.
Okay.
And so that was kind of the idea, but I'm not exactly sure what's existing on your guys' side now or not. But those are things.
So I mean, what was removed was on that side, on the, on the north side?
We didn't remove any existing. There were proposed berms within the subdivision that we removed that we didn't want in the back of residential lots. We don't wanna provide that as a solution because we, we don't have a say on these residential lots, whether they do with the berm or not.
Is it possible to have the engineers tell us if we should foresee a problem that we need to be preparing for now? I mean, we'll talk to our farmer about it, but I just, you know, we wanna know, we wanna know ahead so we can make plans before there's some big issue on someone's property. So is there anything, anyone within this, like the engineers, that could help us with that? Like understand, is there going to be a problem? Cause maybe they would just see that.
And we have our engineer. If you wanted to come in, I'd be happy to, you know, coordinate some discussion with our engineer, maybe, and make sure that the plans as they're being proposed work right in, in theory with what's, what's existing.
Okay.
Yeah, we could do that.
Okay. And what I just, what we just called you?
You can just come in anytime or do a call.
Okay. Would you do that? Thank you. Oh, one more question, sorry. Will you go back to the other image? So we were just wondering about this road that's accessing the property and the trust, let's see. So how many feet is it from Mr. Slosser's land to the, like from our property line to where the road is? And if there is future development on our property, would the city be okay with us bending that road? Because really that cuts off, cause if you go straight down that, there's a flag, like we have a strip that goes straight down to 5100.
Are, are you talking about the road headed north or the road headed south?
The road headed south.
Okay.
So that, that goes straight, and if you follow that straight down, you'd go right to 5100 south, which would be really wonderful, right? But that gives us this little strip right there that I don't think is deep enough for a lot. Does that make sense?
It can do in between Slosser and the north.
And I'm, I, I don't wanna, yeah. So if you're just looking at our property and considering, yeah.
Could you be, like a road where there's like a stop sign?
This is my brother, Will. He just doesn't look there. Can he ask that in the microphone so you can hear it?
Does that make sense?
Sorry.
So we were just wondering, so if you, if you look at the, the previous image.
Sorry, can you go back and forth? But yeah, can you see how it would go straight down to 5100 right there? But on the previous image, like what Will's asking is, could it bend, could it bend when it hits?
So like right when you hit, uh, Roseanne Kilt Bates right there trust, could you put like a stop sign there and then a road, you know, that heads west?
It would go behind this property.
Does that make sense? And then have it cut back?
Is that something?
To go to 5100 all the way through there? If, if we were to develop that piece of land?
Cause it really makes, even if we had to extend that down a full lot going south, it really makes that piece over there on the east side useless for us, if, if it's the size that it looks like it is to me.
Unless, unless Matt, if Mr. Slosser sold like the back part of his property, I guess you could potentially do something with.
But we're not going to negotiate anything.
So. And does that make sense, our question?
I mean, our foundation's still.
Is that, is that a possibility or are you gonna kind of work with?
I'm not sure I understand the question. No, you, uh, so you.
So we don't want the road to go straight?
We're saying, is this deep enough for a lot? Because if you're putting a road here and if the city would only.
The roads all, the roads all contain a share of parcel and we.
Right.
Yeah, what are we talking about? We're looking at future like development.
If we were to develop this in the future, and this road's accessing here, would the city want this road to go straight down to 5100 south? Because that takes this little strip of land, which isn't, it doesn't appear to be deep enough for a lot and it makes it useless for us.
Two roads.
Gotcha. We could, you would probably wanna come in and talk with me at more high level about that. So if you really, if you have to say, but I mean, generally speaking, as you can see with this, you know, property owners all have individual rights, so if they come to us and determine to develop something, right, they, you know, that we, we can prevent anyone from developing, so whatever, one of those parcels can even want to be some of the order. But I just, we never looked at interblock connectivity and trying to add stub roads. I mean, in relation to that, I mean, we'd have to look at specifically, but I'm not exactly sure what we would permit or not depending on subdivision being requested, but I'm, I'm not sure. We would have to kind of hash that out in more detail. If you could come in and talk with us about it.
Would it ever be an option to, instead of having that road, have the road that goes, that's right there on the north side, go straight through?
Like the cul-de-sac right there?
Next to the cul-de-sac, going just east of the cul-de-sac? Is that a road, oh, that's the back of the property, huh?
Or even the cul-de-sac, I mean, we may have more play over there too.
But then these guys would be able to access their.
I think, uh, I think in the spirit, in the spirit of the, of the public hearing, I think with your inputs being heard, you're happy, you're welcome to come in and we can discuss it, but I don't, I don't, I couldn't speak to, you know, making those types of changes at this point to accommodate future property owners, right? So I mean, there's a lot of, but we could discuss it. If you come in and you could kind of help me better understand specifically what you mean. But I understand, you know, there's some interblock connectivity concerns, make sure we have stub roads where they need to go. So, but if you come in and discuss it with me, I think I could understand it better and maybe help, you know, discuss what future development for your parcel could look like. That's something we could discuss.
And how far are you in the process? This is basically, this is what it's gonna be?
Right now, yeah, this is, I mean, it's up to the Plating Commission's approval, but this is what so far we've developed and staff, you know, meets our ordinances. But I do wanna understand your concern that if we at least come in or do a call, cause I can't say here, it's public forum, but I feel like we have a big enough picture and I can see exactly what you're talking about. We probably need to think through it a little bit more and I get out that comment and speak to us.
Were there hearings about this, this development prior to this? We, no hearings or no better commission? Another question, if you could go back to the previous satellite view. I got a call from Rachel Green. Rachel Green is the realtor.
Yeah, yeah, she's serving.
She pointed out that, that the survey, if you, yeah, if you can zoom. if you, yeah, if you can zoom in. The survey shows right here that the property line, that the ditch, that the property line actually goes over here. Now, if you can see the difference here right here, the property line, it appears that the ditch actually curves. And, and the property line and the legal description goes down this way. My question is, is what, you know, how is the developer, how's, what's the name?
MRK three.
MRK?
Yeah.
Is that the engineering firm?
Uh, no, it's our development.
Okay. How's that gonna be addressed? Where will it back to the?
So I'm sorry to, you could, I would consider just stating your question, your comment, but this back and forth, I feel like could happen off, offline.
The, the ditch has been there a hundred years, and so that is the property line, you know? There's a, there's a, what was a fence there, but I don't think there's anything speeding, but that is the property line. Regardless of what the legal description shows right now.
So are you concerned that just part of that ditch falls on the south side of the property line or the entire ditch?
It's just part of the ditch.
Okay.
The ditch actually falls the property line down to somewhere.
Just to the east part of the property?
At this point, it, you know, bears onto what, what would be the boundary of the state's property line. But, but, you know, this part has been, you know, I don't wanna lose any farm mind out there.
Sure.
It's been that way along that street.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Dan Higley. I own a property to the east of the Bellnat Farm and the east of the Kill's Place. I have a lot of concerns. Number one, that's a private ditch that used to service all the Wissom ditch. And all the property owners to the west have rights and access up through there. And anyway.
Flip that around. Look, there you go.
So all the way up the south, or north fence line, that ditch has been there, they've had access to go through there. And then, of course, on the east end of my place, all the way to President Stager's place. And right up in there is the head gate. There's also another head gate that goes through the center of my field, and it's a buried pipeline with about nine or three valves through there. And that also waters, it can water the Bellnat place from two different diversion points. So when that water goes west right here, it can go north, or it can go south, or it can go west. There's three diversion points out of that one pipeline. And Malcolm called me. He kind of wanted to talk to me about the property and the development and stuff, and we kind of thought we had things talked about. But from President Stager's piece here, Stager's session, sure, it's all of them. This ground right here is, is a definite drop off. There's about a four-foot terrace on the west side of the canal that drops off onto the Burned Foxes old place. And then again, it terraces down another foot and a half to two feet to this property. I don't think it's my responsibility to burn this whole side. It's a burden on me and, and me as a farmer, I don't have the funds that other people have. So I don't see how we're gonna resolve that, because every time I'm not gonna get sued by these new property owners because I've got water, I lease the farm ground out to Brad Fowers, who is supposed to be here tonight. And Brad also runs the Bellnat property, the Anderson property, the Kill's property, and a lot of the properties around there. But if you take the access away from these farmers to get their, to their ditch, it's probably not gonna be a wise thing. But anyway, and, and to, to have the farmers drive up this access road and then go across, and then we're still gonna be going to the east to get the diversion point. We've already got people going the whole length of this canal to all of these diversion points because the canal, it comes out right over here across the street on 4600. It's all buried, right, to this, to the south side of 4600, and then it goes underground. And then it comes out over here in this open ditch. But, I mean, those are just some of the concerns I have. And I guess the most important concern is you can see how far this property line is off. It depends on which survey company you use. Steven J. Fraschwell, I paid him like $3,300 years ago, and I never even got a piece of paper from him because they kept telling me that the property lines, I had 29 feet over this property line, and I had 22 feet over this property line to the west. So you talk to Great Basin Engineering, and they'll tell you the same thing. Well, we'll just, and so we went into Weaver County years ago and talked to Weaver County, and they will not take any responsibility on any of this mess that's out here due to the fact that they don't wanna go back into every single loan institution or mortgage company and have every single property description rewritten. And, and that's right from the Weaver County surveyor's lips. So I, I mean, I don't know how this is all gonna work out, but you can see the, where it's green on the Bellnat property, that's part of my ground.
It's important to us to know, this is the G O D S M O tool. They're not, you know, just depicting it. It all is based on the survey.
Yeah.
Recorded plans. So this is just very commonly off. It will leave a fair amount on these, these aerials. But just for the sake of conversation, I wanted to pull it up for you.
I mean, I don't care. It's, it's just, I just want the planning commission to know that those are some of the concerns from the neighbor. But there again, I think I should have to worry about my farmer flooding out somebody else's home.
And you're concerned to be that entire back east portion, is that right?
Correct.
Yeah.
This whole east fence line right here borders my property.
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, well now, close, motion to close the public hearing and proceed with the regular meeting. And bring it back to the planning commission for discussion on the public input.
That's my one point here is just, as a planning commission, we don't, we are just bound by what fits into the ordinances. A lot of these discussions that happened here would probably just have to be happened in, in a different setting between the, between the two groups, so I encourage you to kind of get those resolved outside of that. Because we're just bound legally as, looking at this as a, does it fit within the ordinances and is everybody still have access to their water and things like that? Those are definite concerns that we, I think the city during their meetings has addressed and and given a solution to. So that's, I guess, that's, I'm not discrediting your comments that you made. I'm just saying what we can legally do as a commission, so.
Well, for the commission, just one note, I mean, I took the notes here and I'll take them to our engineer, our public works, and make sure we have discussion on the individual items. And when it comes to approval, we'll do our best to address the items best we can. Like you said, I'm not sure that we always have the resolution or that, you know, it's always our place to have the resolution, but we'll, you know, I'll make sure that the appropriate people have all the context required to make sure the plans meet ordinances and the solutions are put forward.
Malcolm, one, one question I would have and something we'd wanna look at is, they're talking about the drainage from the subdivision going to the west and across the road down that drainage ditch. Is that ditch, does it have the capacity for runoff and the drainage from there?
You're talking about the, the drainage that's gonna go on 59 and go down?
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah, we had, we had it all engineered and, you know, coordinated with our engineer. Their engineer provided plans. It's been, you know, built out appropriately for it.
Okay.
I think they even built in, to be frank, I believe they built in some extra capacity anticipating that it being a drawing point. We don't wanna send stuff north until we need to, just because of the huge ditch that is there. So this is a solution. We're gonna have to draw that line in some development, but we built in some future capacity so that some of the neighboring properties could also, because you know, the alternative would be to pipe that ditch all the way down to 4,000 south or whoever develops this. So we're trying not to lay that burden on one developer. We're trying to, you know, kind of provide solutions as we go, and then once we get a little bit closer, then that solution will be what needs to be done, so. Uh, this was a better solution for this existing one.
On that, um, access easement on the east end, there's that hammerhead on the, at the end of that road. Is Weaver Fire okay with that being used as part of the access easement? And they're kind of funny with those sometimes, aren't they?
I'll make sure to follow up on that as well. It's a good heads up. But yeah, we have had our, we've had to fire a review, so I'm assuming that, but I can make sure with David Reed that he's aware of it.
Thank you. We'll now move on. Any other discussion, Sheldon? Anything?
No, I was just wondering, did that ditch, is any of that gonna be escrowed or like, Malcolm just made the comment about, you know, piping it down to 4,000 eventually? So who pays for that when that happens?
There have been considerations for escrowing additional. This, what was required here was proportionate, and like you said, actually, potentially, not, not directly, but I think the capacity is more than what was required and will, will need. So hasn't been considerations to escrow that ditch heading north that I'm aware of, so, or that we, that we had.
All right, thank you. We'll now close the public hearing for the Kibolek State subdivision located at the parcel listed. We'll now enter the public hearing for the Swayze subdivision located at parcel 08042007584315 for Brayden Swayze. And turn some time over to staff for comment.
Just some context before comment. Just a similar lot subdivision in our one zone next to Sky New subdivision. They would be providing curved sidewalk there in the front. I'm not escrowing for that. That was a recommendation of staff. And so just wanted to provide that context in light of the public hearing, kind of where we're at. This one's similar to that third review. And will be, uh, the third review, you know, at this point, they're seeing their final letters of approval, so it'll probably be coming before you guys for approval here in the next month to three months, so.
Thank you. We will now enter a public hearing for the Swayze subdivision. Again, three minute timeline. Come forward, state your comments and concerns or so we can, can I get, again, we won't be voting on this tonight, but just discussion to get your input. No public comment. So we'll close, motion to close, public comment, and proceed with the regular meeting. Bring it back to planning commission for discussion on the public input, which everyone's done, so. So I will turn some time over to citizen comment. Again, three minutes allowed and state your name, but not, don't need to state your address. No.
Oh, did you want, oh, I was, yeah.
But no citizen comment?
This is for public citizen comment, yeah.
So if I wanna comment on my flag lot, can I do that now?
That'd be your chance, probably, or you can come to any other, you need to comment, this is your chance.
Well, heck, I am not.
You just sounded unclose.
I was the, the star of that flag lot.
We stayed here.
You went over and you, we, roughly, yes, well. So we purchased the property and we can obey, by the, the rules as they are and just tear the house down and do what we wanna do. We meet, you know, we can meet the requirements. But there's a gal that lives in the house that's been there for 25 years and
She's old.
There's not really a lot of sense in kicking her out when I can do what I want without tearing it down. I don't plan on doing anything else upfront. So to me, the flag lot just makes sense because it gives me everything I want. And I don't have to be the bad guy to kick her out. And, and when she's gone, you know, we'll refurb the house and it'll be a low-income rental for the city, you know, that everybody seems to, to need to do. So as, as I looked at it, I just get this, no, we don't do flag lots. And I'm going, no, there's gotta be a way. Well, no, you don't meet the requirements for a, a building lot, so you can't do it. And I'm just going, well, I'm a problem solver, not a, a no guy, you know? There's gotta be a way to, to work around this. And then as I went out and talked with other cities, this is absolutely, it's just gonna happen and, and we built that into our code and I says, well, I guess I'm gonna push Oprah to, to take a look at it. And my preference is, I would love to have it a flag lot, but it's not the end of the world for us either way. But it seems logical. I've heard from other people within the city that have worked to try to get another house on a family farm or whatever. And, you know, the, the headaches and stuff that they've had to go through to, to either be able to do it or to just be kicked out, you know? And so that's really the, my interest in it is, maybe it's time that we take a look at something like that. And, you know, I, I asked around, I says, why not? Why do we not? Nobody can give me a reason why not. And then I hear the fire trucks need room to turn around. The fire trucks claim that that's not the issue. So there's a lot of folklore involved in, in what really goes on and, and the reasons for or against. And I says, if, if nobody can give me a reason why not, I'm the guy who'll push it and see if we can't get it approved and, and get what we would like in the end. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know she was here during the work meeting. Was you here during?
Yes.
So you heard that we were, we had been discussed several years ago and none of us were here. And so we're going to absolutely look at it, and I appreciate you bringing it to the attention of the city, to our attention, and we're definitely gonna look at it and discuss it and.
Or it's all I can ask.
Yeah, that's, that's what we're gonna do. But I, I appreciate you coming and bringing it to our attention. That's awesome that we have the citizen input to do that. Thank you. That's awesome that we have the citizen input to do that. Thank you.
I'll close with the citizen comment portion, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion later.
Uh, he, he, he's, I'll flag it.
I have a motion to adjourn from Commissioner Wilson and a second from Commissioner Greener, Paul and Faber.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn. Meeting adjourned.